Good evening, everyone. We'll start in a second as soon as our attorney shows up. So.
That'll probably scare you some.
Congratulations, Damian. It's not just the young adults. It's the family and the coaches that make it happen. So, hey, guys on the team, I think your family needs a round of applause from you to them. It takes a village to do this stuff, doesn't it? A lot of hours, a lot of in and out, a lot of McDonald's, a lot of, hey, guys, can you bring donuts? Can you bring this and that? Are we ready, sir? Oh. Well, with that, we're gonna get started. We're gonna call this meeting's order at 6:32 on May 2nd. If we could all please rise, and those who can, to pledge allegiance. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Rusty.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Present.
Mayor Heffernan.
Present.
I think we have a presentation.
Just a few.
Yes.
Good evening again, everybody. Just wondered if he'll be here. How come they're all taller than I?
They play basketball.
Oh, man. I got a six foot four and a six foot five son. I'm just like, what happened? Well, congratulations again. Coach, why don't you come on over here? Now, I can read this, or would you like to read this?
I can read this.
Then we'll go again. He's shy, isn't he?
Yes.
Damian High School Basketball, 2022. The Damian High School basketball team finished the regular season with a record 26-2 and became the Baseline League Champions. The team qualified for the prestigious Open Division Playoffs, the highest honor in basketball playoffs. Following the Southern Section Open Division Playoffs, the team qualified for the CIF State Division One Playoffs, where they went 4-0, defeating Clovis North to bring home the CIF State Division One Championship. Okay, I'm gonna try the names here, okay? I'm gonna try my best. The team was led by senior captain RJ Smith.
Pass your hand, RJ.
Who was named Baseline League MVP and San Gabriel Valley Player of the Year. In addition to Smith, this part has got extraordinary contribution from seniors Caleb Smith. Now, on trial is Bradley Z. Five E Word. And junior Jimmy Oladoken. I said it right, didn't I? He was named All Baseball League Honors. The team was coached by Mike Laduke. And in December reached their third milestone, winning his 1,000th game. And was recently named California State Coach of the Year. The team was assisted by Darren Zabel. Come on up, guys. Eric Johnson. They're not there, okay. Okay, well, come up here here. Eric Johnson, Andre McLean, David Ning, and Alex Arredondo. And you're gonna do the teams now, the names of the teams. We're gonna pass out these things. It's your turn now, sir. And you've got the mic. Congratulations, you guys. What an awesome show.
We were very proud to get the city of Laverne, all of our students and all of our youth.
We're very proud to have you here. Coach?
Those are for the coaches.
There is the players.
All right. Freshman Jacob Allen.
Give the most important one first.
That's right. I just don't wanna break it. Now, with that, you get an in and out thing too. So after that, you can just.
Freshman Lucas Arieta.
Okay, we're getting this here, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations.
You might have thought we had a little time to prepare for this.
Freshman Nate Garcia.
We're gonna have to talk about science, huh?
I played volleyball last year.
Sophomore Xavier Clinton. Junior Elijah Brown. Junior Pierce Hagan. Junior Austin Edwards. Junior Caden Brown. Junior Chris Obiki. Junior Jake McKinn. Junior Malcolm Windross.
Did my exercises.
I was getting the steps too bad.
Senior Roland Serna. Senior Sam Slezak. And we have our five starters left. We have a very unique team this year. Normally, you play seven, eight, or nine guys. We played mostly five throughout the year. So these five guys were battling most of the minutes, and they were just fantastic. Junior Jimmy Oladoken. Senior Bradley Z. Senior Caleb Smith. Senior Five E Word. And our captain, senior RJ Smith.
2022 CIF Champions. Okay, I'm gonna say this. Tallest to the not so tall. You guys wanna get a picture with the coach? So why don't you come on in? We'll put the tall guys in the back. Okay, come on. Okay, don't all over the ones. Let's go.
You're in the very front.
Don't be shy, family. Come on, get up. If you want family, if you want pictures with your kids too, please come on and get pictures with your children. Come on. Thank you, Mom. Appreciate that.
There you go. Like only you three. There you go. You two. There you go. Okay, ready?
Spray one again.
Right there.
My brother's six. My youngest, only six years old. Everybody get their pictures? Congratulations. 2022 CIF Champions. And it's Damian's administration. And what a wonderful school we have in Laverne also. Thank you, guys. And I know you all, when you sit down and watch our next meeting that's coming up, it's so exciting. We're gonna talk about finance and all sorts of other stuff, but I think you should go and get it out, first of all. Let your family go home. This has been a busy season for them. Guys, we're gonna take a little recess for five minutes. Thank you all for being. You can go. It's okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. We're gonna reconvene right now at 6:49. And we have a. Where are we? Presentation. Well, first of all, okay, San Gabriel Valley Mosquito Infecter Control District presentation. Mr. Rusty.
Yes.
We have no water, so there are no mosquitoes. Thank you. So I had to say that.
We could wish.
Right, we would wish, but it's not the case because there's swimming pools that aren't kept, and there's other things. City water, not yours.
Sierra Lebrun Call Court.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. How do I follow up with a few of the presentations? But I'll do my best. So my name is Levy Simon from the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito Infecter Control District, of which your city appointed trustee of least transmissances on the board. And our name is very long for something simple that we do. And that is to control and prevent mosquito-borne diseases. And next slide, please. Now, around this time, we'll see a lot of different insects that come out of the woodwork here in the, or throughout San Gabriel Valley. The key thing to remember, though, is that mosquitoes are tiny. A lot of people think that. Next slide, please. That a large-looking mosquito bouncing around your porch light is a mosquito, when in fact, it's actually a crane fly. Those things are also called mosquito hawks. Unfortunately, they do not eat mosquitoes. They have no biting mouthparts whatsoever. They drink nectar. So if you just see that bouncing around your porch light, you can't be freaked out by them, but they are a sign of a healthy ecosystem around your home. We really wanna pay attention to the small mosquitoes that are no longer than a quarter inch because they evolved to be small so that they can sneak up on us. Next slide, please. Now, there are two different groups of mosquitoes. I'm gonna turn it on to mosquito experts here. The first group is called Culex. Culex are the ones that you grew up around here, you know them. They're small, little, dark mosquitoes that come out at dusk, and they usually bite us while outside, enjoying late afternoon at the park, outside your backyard. And they're the ones responsible for spreading West Nile virus. Now, West Nile virus is actually considered a bird disease. So before we all developed this lab, West Nile virus is always supposed to transmit between birds and mosquitoes. But because of the way we urbanize, there are not as many birds as there used to be. So who do they bite after biting birds sometimes? People. And that's how we get West Nile virus. And fortunately, only one in five folks will experience flu-like symptoms, and one in 150 will actually develop a neurological disorder, which may end up in a hospital. But any case is already one more case than enough. Uh, next slide, please. Now, this other mosquito, people have come to love to hate because they're fairly new. They were introduced in 20, well, we detected them in 2011, 2012. And they're called Ades mosquitoes, also known as ankle biters. They're small, black and white, and they're very distinct in not only how they look in terms of black and white, but because of how they bite. When you walk outside for about two minutes, you come back in, you may have three or four bites already on your lips. It's not because you have more of these Ades mosquitoes, but because they have evolved to snack on us. So they'll take multiple bites over time to then get a full blood meal. And then they'll use your blood to create the eggs. Something that's really unique about these Ades mosquitoes is that they can lay their eggs individually stuck on containers. They're like time capsules. So if you have a bucket of water that you dump out, which great, most people do, those eggs can still be stuck on the container, and those eggs are viable for at least a year. So if they are, if they reintroduce water to that same container, whether it's a saucer or an old tire, those mosquitoes will rev back up. They hail from tropical lands, including rice paddies and different parts of tropical environments. How they've established here is because we have produced enough dense vegetation for those microclimates for them to exist. And also, they can be drawn to water or as little amount of water as a bottle cap. So they have learned to live only in cities. So if you go to any major city worldwide, these Ades mosquitoes are plaguing our urban environment. They don't really exist outside of cities because they evolved to only seek one single prey, and that's people. And unfortunately, they are responsible for disease outbreaks such as Zika, Dengue fever, yellow fever. And something that is fun to say but not fun to have, chicken guinea. These mosquitoes unfortunately bite all day and throughout the day, actually. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned, a small bottle cap of water is enough to attract them. So imagine, next slide, please, a swimming pool of water. One of these swimming pools you see there can churn out about 3 million mosquitoes a month. These are primarily geared towards those Culex mosquitoes. They like big bodies of water that they can lay their eggs in. So their flight range is about 25 miles. Unfortunately for us, they don't have to fly very far to find another water source or find a blood meal from a human being or a bird. Next slide, please. We do have a special program that we are challenging every resident to sign up for. It's the Bite Back Program. These are for residents who want to bring their neighbors together in a neighborhood and work with us to essentially reset their homes in their neighborhood to a point where the risk of mosquito-borne diseases is down to near zero. What we do is we meet with a couple neighbors on the same block, and what we try to do is do a sweep of everyone's front and backyards and give each neighbor a personalized mosquito plan for their property specifically. And what that does, and we have found what that actually does is over the next couple of seasons, they have found a lot less mosquitoes churning out in their neighborhoods, which is perfect. And the reason why we started this up is because of the Ades mosquitoes. I did just mention that those Culex mosquitoes fly 25 miles or so, but these Ades mosquitoes, they don't go as far as a single block. So usually, if there is a block-wide issue of these Ades mosquitoes, it's found, the solution is usually found in that block radius. Next slide, please. And we do a lot of work in the broader community. Most of it is very visible in the public areas. So we are out there inspecting gutters. Also, the storm drains, believe it or not. When it's, in a dead of one sheriff, when it's 40 degrees above ground, when the underground storm drains, it's a nice tropical environment year-round. So we do have teams that you'll see us pop open those lids, not the sewer lids, we don't wanna touch those. But the storm drain lids, where we can inspect our mosquitoes and treat for them next. So you actually see our teams out there in these big, really, to me, ugly yellow truck. And you cannot miss, especially in traffic. And they're popping those lids around holiday, the holidays. We're also in your schools too. So if you have any connection to the educational system, we definitely come out to schools. We do introduce STEAM as part of our curriculum. And we're also out at events. On the slide you see on the top-left corner, that's a giant inflatable mosquito, 13 feet tall. What's amazing about it is that kids from afar will see it. They, jumper! They come in, and we track them into an education show experience that they cannot forget. And in addition to that, we also offer repellent booths. It's fairly new. We know that events are ramping up in many cities, including yours. So what we do is we set up about two, three hours at an evening event outdoors, and we offer to every resident free use of repellents, and we educate them on what works, what doesn't work, what's best for them. And then by the time the band kicks into ear or when the movie starts, we then close shop and move out of there. But by that time, we usually have a couple hundred folks that are already prepared for mosquitoes at that time. Next slide, please. And our year-round slogan that you hear from us is tip, toss, protect. Tip out the stagnant water, toss unused containers, which may contain those Ades eggs, and protect yourself with repellent. DEET has been the gold standard. I know over time, people have come to not like DEET, whether how it feels or their skin. My favorite is Oil of Levemycolipus, or also known as PMDEET, and also Pecan Addin. Those you can find on any shelf in the pharmacy or in the outdoor sporting section. IR3535 is an up-and-comer from Europe, but we'll see how much traction it gained here in the U.S. And for any resident, I do see any of the nasty swimming pools that have been churning with mosquitoes. They can submit a tip to us. For those online, you can see it at 626-814-9466. Or just visit us on our website at sgbmosquito.org. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson?
I do.
Has more power.
I have a couple of questions. You showed that pool that looked really gross, you know, it's all dirty. Is that the only time that the meals? I mean, if you have a clean, you know, chlorinated pool, that shouldn't be a problem?
As long as it's functional, so it is coordinated, that the pump is running, so circulating water, then you're okay.
Okay.
We do have residents that have somewhat empty pools. We do also recommend that they get help with us to coordinate any potential solutions. We understand that fixing a really dry tap pool or a pool that we have takes a lot of money. So we work with residents, maybe temporarily put in what we call mosquito fish. They're like little guppies, but they're really hard to last through the winter, and they can gobble up those mosquito larvae in the water while they try to remediate the swimming pool.
How do you get rid of the fish afterwards?
We actually fish them back out and we redistribute them. They breathe like bunnies, and we can use them elsewhere.
And the other thing, Yvonne, is what he's talking about coming out to an event to present what he's talking about to the general public, maybe our concert in the parks would be a good time for him to come out. Move him to the park, too.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And bring your big mosquito with you.
Yes. Kids would love that.
I was thinking, I was thinking more like Fourth of July,
but it's obviously a holiday. But I mean, it's, maybe you could put some stuff out there that, unmanned booth or something with some kind of repellent because that's gonna be in the evening where it's gonna be warm and there's gonna be, you know, a lot of people there.
Actually, that's a great point to bring up here because we just this year realized that we only have a body of six people to go out to 26 cities in San Gabriel Valley. So we have produced a bite repellent kit. It's a big red box, and we stuff it with a bunch of repellent and brochures that the cities can use. And you could lay it out at your city table, and people can come up and grab what they need and learn how to stay bite-free.
We could do that, we can do that for Fourth of July. That'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Proclamation. Month of May 2022. Do we have the person online? How are you? This is Dr. Kim. I'm gonna say her last name, Hugh. We can't hear her, but this'll be. We have a proclamation. This is Aura, City of Laverne, takes pride and recognize May 2022 as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, celebrating the many notable contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans who have enriched our nation's history and are instrumental in its future success. And whereas the theme for this year's observance is advancing leaders through collaboration, which also reflects Laverne's strong commitment to prioritize collaboration, diversity, transparency, and inclusion. And whereas the month of May was selected as it honors the immigration of the first Japanese people to the United States in 1843. Additionally, May also marks the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in 1869, which was built with significant contributions from the Chinese immigrants. And whereas AAPIs are one of the fastest-growing ethnic populations in the nation, more than 20 million strong, and the Census Bureau recognized AAPIs as 11% of the population of Laverne. And whereas AAPI have distinguished themselves as leading researchers in science, medicine, and technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, distinguished lawyers, judges, government leaders in the arts, literature, and sports, as war heroes who defend our country and peace-time healthcare heroes on the front lines of the pandemic. And whereas, we recognize the accomplishments and inspiration of the generations of AAPI individuals in our country, as well as locally here in Laverne, as we continue to work to create a more supportive, inclusive, and equitable community that fully embraces all individuals of Asian descent. And now therefore be resolved that on the second day of May 2022, the City of Laverne does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, dated this day, May 22nd, 2022. And I present this to you. And Dr. Kim, do you have, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. On behalf of the council committee, thank you to the City of Laverne for this proclamation and recognition of this supportive month for our Asian-American and Pacific Islander community. It is a wonderful step toward improving Laverne as a people, as a community.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Any announcements of upcoming community events?
Sherri Bass?
Yes. And I wanted to announce, first of all, that the community yard sale was a smashing success for the Historical Society. We netted almost $600 at the community yard sale, all of which is gonna get shoveled into the restoration of our 1938 truck. Last week, Saturday, on the 30th, we sponsored a window restoration workshop, and we had a terrific presenter come out. About 20 to 25 people attended. People wanna save their old homes and fix their wood windows and non-replaceable vinyl. Got a two-hour lesson on how to go about doing that from a really unbelievable craftsman. That was a wonderful thing. And I love the fact that when I went to give him an honorarium, he turned the money over to his assistant, who's learning the trade for him. So I thought that was really charming. So I thought that was really charming. I would also like to announce that this coming Saturday, we have a few slots left for our Get on the Bus tour of Old Downtown Lordsburg. So if you're interested, come see me. These are by reservation, because we have limited seating. So our tour is scheduled at 1:45. You need to be where you need to be at 1:30. So if you're interested, come find me and we'll get you signed up. And finally, a little information about the 1938. It has been packed up, and it's now been sent to the Old Anvil Restoration Company in the City of Orange. They are a rebuilder, and they're going to be doing all the mechanical and machine tooling that was outside of the scope of what the high school kids could do. So the high school kids went as far as they would go. Now the truck is at Old Anvil, and it will come back to Benita in the fall with all the mechanicals put out. They'll hang the engine, they'll put the transmission on, they'll set up the wiring package, they'll re-weld and reattach the cab, the fenders, and the grille, and put tires on, and it'll all go back to the high school. So the kids can practice taking it all off and then putting it all back on again. So it'll be one of those learning experiences. But in between then and now, our plan is that the 38 will roll through the City of Laverne on the Fourth of July. It will probably be towed through the parade route. And I would like to sit in the cab of the 38, since I do get to go through the parade, I think, for the Jack Huntington Award. And it's not exactly a late-model convertible, but hey, it's our truck and we're going to save it. So anyhow, look for us on the Fourth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherry. Any other announcements? I just said it real quick. When we had a structure fire, what's the street? Was it Sycamore? On Sycamore, a week and a half or so ago. Last week?
Last one.
And we had a lot of resources from outside agencies come, but our Laverne firefighters were the ones on the battle, on the blaze, and they did an amazing job. And they did have to go into the structure fire. I was able to see them as they were coming out. And it was rather engulfed, and I just, kudos to our Laverne firefighters. They're all safe, thank goodness, but this is a dangerous business they're in. So we just, thank God we have our own. We did have other resources, but they were the ones on the fire. They were the ones that were inside that structure trying to break it down. So, thank you, guys. We move on to a consent calendar, Mr. Russi. Anybody, do we have anything called? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Vote, please.
And that vote was unanimous. Thank you.
We move to public hearings, Mr. Russi. 2022-23 Paramedic Service Fee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will take this item. The paramedic service fee was approved by the voters as measure GG. And at that time, it was required that there would be a public hearing every year to adjust for the cost of CPI. We are bringing that forward as we have in past years. The CPI adjustment for the current year is 6.2%, which will take the rate to 5.91 per month per resident household. The estimated revenue that will be generated is additional $17,000, which is necessary to help support the service that we provide for those who aren't aware of the, this fee is attached to an individual's municipal service bill that they receive from the city and allows for free transport. The resident does not have any cost, out-of-pocket cost for medical transport should be required. So it's a very cost-effective insurance policy. With that, I have, will I have any questions?
Any questions for staff on the paramedic fee?
So raise from 5.58 to 5.9133 cents.
Correct. Correct. Another further question, a vote of public comment. Open up the public hearing. Does anybody, do you need a vote channel?
I wanted to know, I know this is for the proposed budget for '22 to '23, but monies that were spent during COVID time, because first responders had to have state of emergency personnel available. And as you guys discussed earlier, where you have to have a minimum number of staffing. And so I know that more money was allocated towards that. So it may have dipped into this money. Is there any way that any of the ARPA money can cover the costs for this, even though it's not in the timeframe of COVID? But, you know, because we used our money then, let's use their money now, so to speak, to cover those expenses. I know it's only 33 cents, but when you start looking at it on a yearly, five-year, 10-year basis, it will, it'll increase exponentially. So, just a consideration for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other? Come on up.
Yeah, I did. I want announcements. I wrote another in our public.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
Whatever she said she did.
There it is.
Not up there, you're good.
I have, I have a letter to J.R. Rammels. J.R.?
Do you want to talk on a public comment?
Oh, I thought you were calling public.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a comment on this. I will come back later.
Sorry.
Hold your card.
No comment. Yeah, hold my card.
Any other public comments on this?
I'm over here.
On the public hearing? Regarding the paramedic fee. Do we have anybody called? We just have. We'll close the public hearing and come back to this. Any comments or questions or concerns about this? Then we need a motion.
I'll make the motion that, to adopt, where do I need to be?
2023, the public hearing.
I'd say we adopt this.
Resolution 2022-19.
Okay. I propose that we adopt resolution 2022-19.
Second.
I, I.
You lost. Where are you?
In a meeting.
Okay, guys. Okay, I just want to say that with our ARPA funds, could we please get some speakers that you can turn on? Caterwell? Yes.
She's second.
What?
I did second.
Vote, please.
That was also unanimous.
I wasn't going to say that, because you don't be through this. Well, they went past this vote real fast.
Public hearing, next item is a public hearing for the vacation of City of Laverne Public Utility Easement located at 1941 North White Avenue, Mr. Russi. Director Shear. Oh, sorry. You snuck up there. You know, you're a big guy. You snuck up there. You know what it is, though? This is an oval of six foot nine people.
I know, I know.
Oh, where he is? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, here as a council member. I'm filling in this evening for city engineer Cody Howie, who's not able to be here this evening, but he is available on Zoom if there are some questions. I'm not sure. As the mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing for a vacation of the city utility. He's on private property located at 1941 White Avenue. The property's two parcels, located at the northwest corner of Light and Arrow Highway. It does also south of the metro tracks. The city vacated, G Street previously had crossed, connected from First Street to Arrow Highway. But in 1967, the city vacated that street. But at that time, we reserved a public utility easement for potential storm drain in this location. The city's never had a need for storm drain here, and we, Public Works Department, has verified that there is no physical storm drain located in this easement. There was a building built in the 1990s on this property over this easement, which wouldn't only be allowed if we did have utilities there. And the property owner is simply requesting that we vacate our easement on their property at this time, since there's no need for it. Public Works and city engineer also identified that there's no apparent need for drainage facilities in this area in the future. First Street, as it slopes down and water travels from the north to the south, currently drains to East Street and then south to the Arrow Ave. So anything north of this site wouldn't have a need for storm drains cutting through it. So it is a public hearing at your last meeting or at your April 4th meeting. You set this public hearing. So staff's recommending that you open the public hearing, take any comment, and then approve resolution 22-20, approving the vacation of this easement. Like I said, I'm happy to answer your questions. City engineers also.
Thank you, Director Shear. Do we have any questions for me, Dr. Shear?
Just.
Hold on, hold on a second. So this is, this is like 20 feet or 50 feet from where my property on First Street is. So I need to get out of here, recuse myself.
You're out of here.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn for two seconds while he runs out of here. Recession, not adjourn. Well, now I was thinking, wasn't I? We can't go anywhere. We have a closed session, so. I will reconvene the meeting now at 7:14 p.m. Mr. Shear. Okay, any questions, Mr. Crosby? If you speak your word.
I'm using this one over here now. Just a question. If a building was built in the 1990s, why wasn't this done back then? Is it normal to rebuild buildings over easements?
There's no record of why this happened. It's possible that this easement wasn't even identified on the map at the time, and so nobody was aware of this in 1967. I wasn't here then when that happened, so.
No?
I was here in the 90s, but that's the early 90s. And so, we don't have any record in any discussion about this easement on the property when that building was allowed to be built. But, yeah, they just stop prior, normal practice to prevent buildings over.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Shear? Your button's on. We're going to open up the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on this? For this public hearing? I know it's exciting. I know there's lots of questions. And do we have anybody? No, I see. We're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to this. It looks like we need to vote on this. Do we have a, can we get a motion, please? You want my speaker, right?
I vote to pass the resolution number 2220.
Second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, sure. No, it's not working. Vote, please.
Now lose a four-o vote.
We can bring Mr. Davis back in. You just took your house under enemy and killed me.
I saw it on Zoom.
You couldn't do anything, like, couldn't come back yet. We have item C, which is the 2022 Comprehensive Fee Schedule, Mr. Russi.
Yes, that matter, it needs to be continued. We are not prepared to bring that forward to council, so we'll be advancing that to your next agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Director Shear. Thank you for your being tall. Thank you. Thank you for being tall. Item eight, Mr. Russi, other matters. Housing Rehabilitation Program, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Yes, Candace Bocock will be handling this item. But just an intro or reminder, council, back in December, when you, we looked at all of the, our ARPA allocation of $70, one of the broader projects that was identified was to pursue housing rehab in some form. And Candace has been working since that time to bring back something for council considerations. So with that, Candace.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So back in October of 2019, the city council gave staff conceptual approval to explore options of facilitating this housing rehabilitation program using the community development block grant funds. Unfortunately, the pandemic, the pandemic began shortly after, and the program was never able to be implemented. In March last year, the city received funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, or what we call ARPA. In December, the city council held a study session to discuss the use of this funding to address the community's needs and priorities, and supported the request to allocate $500,000 to this housing rehabilitation program. The proceeds from the ARPA funds will improve the quality of life of lower-income City of Laverne residents by assisting with emergency health and safety repairs, correction of code enforcement violations, and general property improvements necessary to make homes safe and attractive. The total program budget being proposed, like I said, is $500,000, which will include the consultant costs to administer the program, which would be no more than 20%, not to exceed $100,000. The purpose of the housing rehabilitation program is to provide grants to homeowners of single-family detached dwellings for the preservation of decent, safe, and sanitary housing. Grants will be given to eligible low to moderate income owner occupied homeowners to cover the cost of necessary house repairs. Grants will be administered on a first-come, first-served basis. The goal of the program is to provide grants of up to $10,000 for single-family homes to aid in improving permanent structures within the City of Laverne. Unless the city council chooses to give more specific direction to staff, roofs, foundations, electrical, plumbing, heating and air extermination, and any necessary home protection measures will be given priority. Vote for the program and will be considered prior to any other home repairs. Staff distributed a request for proposal for five qualified firms to help implement the program. Two proposals were returned, one from Willdan Engineering and the other from Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services. Both proposals were reviewed and compared, and although they were very similar, each charging the exact same amount, Willdan Engineering ended up having much more experience with this type of program. Staff is asking that the city council review and approve the attached agreement and proposal for Willdan Engineering to aid in administering this program. Once the PSA is approved, Willdan will be able to develop a more formalized program, begin advertising to the community, and establish a start date. If the program is very successful, staff can bring an update back to you on this program. And at that time, the city council could have the option to program more funding if they chose to at that time. But that's staff. Recomends the city council adopt resolution number 22-21, approving the contract with Willdan Engineering to design and administer the program and give staff the direction to move forward with the creation of the housing rehabilitation program.
Thank you, Ms. Bocock. Do you have any questions for Ms. Bocock?
I do. I have a question. Okay, you're talking roughly about $100,000 for this contract to administer this. We can't do it in-house? I'm just thinking, $100,000 could go a long ways with helping residents of the community. Do we need a consulting firm, or do we not have the staff to handle it?
We definitely need a consulting firm to facilitate the program. In the past, staff did do it. We also had a significant number of more staff at that time. So it's not useful.
And the prior program had a $6,000 limit on mobile homes, but it is, and a $10,000 limit for single-family homes. For this program, though, you are just asking for the $10,000 for single-family homes, not any of the mobile homes.
Correct.
Is there a?
The reason was, when we talked about it with council for the CPG program, it was, the direction was given for single-family homes specifically, not to include mobile homes. That can be changed.
Well, we were also targeting at the time, because there were some areas in Laverne that were residential areas that were in need of some help. And again, the pandemic came along, reduction in staff, and it's like, we just got hit hard, so. But.
So you mentioned that if this were to pass, then Willdan would come back to us with a more fleshed-out, like, criteria list, how they would market out and make sure that people were aware of the process and how they could apply and what they needed to produce, or whatever came along with that. Do we know what a tentative timeline for that might look like?
We are hoping to be able to start advertising June 1st.
Thank you.
I talked to city manager Russi today about this, because when I first looked at it, I said, $500,000, that's great. But then you carve out 20% and $100,000 for a fee structure. Understand, and I do understand it takes a lot of staff to monitor this, but at $10,000 a hit, I mean, what kind of renovations are we doing on these homes at $10,000? And we're going to have a person that's monitoring this and overseeing contractors. Well, there's not necessarily a lot of competitive bids for $10,000. And my concern was that, you know, we're eating up 20% of this on just the consultant alone. But understanding that now, I would, we talked, I think I would like to see this as a review as it goes forward, you know, once they get their information out, once we figure out the game plan to get out to the residents, is to revisit it again, maybe in a few months, once it gets rolling, to see if this $10,000 is reality, or maybe bump it up to $15,000, or look it down the road if this is, if it's successful. and then maybe look in and talk and discussing with council and our budget to see if we can add some funds to that down the road. Is that, that's kind of what we discussed, Mr. Rusty?
Yeah, except for changing the amount might be a little more complicated. I think you have to pick whatever the amount, the maximum amount that you're willing to accept on an individual case, whether we choose to add more to it at a later date if our interest exceeds the available funding. That is something different.
I think $10,000 is a good amount, and just like I said, it's the administration part. But at that point, then, we would stick with the $10,000, see how that flies. And if we need to add more money to it later, we could look at that to our options. But, I can also, you know, see how it's going and see who takes this.
I agree, and I struggle with an outside firm doing it, just, but we just don't have the staff capacity to be able to manage the program.
Well, I understand it's federally ARPA funds, and we have to make sure that we're meeting the criteria. And just, bottom line is, we all want as many residents as we possibly can, that's the.
Actually, actually, your comments brought up a question that I have, which is, if Willdan is brought on for $100,000 and we decide to give more money to the fund, does their fee go up, or is that a fixed fee that they proposed?
It's not a fixed fee. It's, that is a maximum.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, it could possibly be lower.
Okay.
But it can't be any more than 20%.
Okay, gotcha, so it's a cap, not a, not a, not a prorated share. So, it could be that we spend the $500,000 and they say our cap should only be 12%, so they get 60 grand, okay. I may have a few comments after we open it up, but thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Volkok. We'll open up the public hearing, any comments or questions? Do you need to vote, Jan?
I want to thank Candace Volkok for the work that she's been doing on this program. This is something that I've been asking for several months, in many meetings, as you know. However, holding it or making it specifically for single-family homes only, I think, is something that needs to be reconsidered. I don't think we should be excluding mobile homes or something classified other than single-family resident, tiny homes, or ADUs, or whatever, however they're classified. The verbiage needs to include those residents as well. And if it is not, then we need to make sure that there's enough ARPA money to create a secondary program to make it specifically to include those others that are not included in this program. But I tend to agree with you, I mean, potentially $100,000, you know? I mean, what is the math on that? If somebody only gets 10 grand, and, but the guy who's telling them what you can do with that money costs 100 grand, that's not, that's not wise spending. And with all of the expenditures that this city is facing within the next budget year, I think you really need to reconsider how that money is spent. I realize that the staff is probably overburdened, and in the past was able to facilitate that, but why not hire in-house more staff that could accommodate the workload in-house rather than subsidize it to a subcontractor that's charging these exorbitant amounts? I realize they probably have the experience to do it, but you could probably find somebody who's willing to do it within the city. I, I just really think that that is, it's just not feasible. It just does not make any conscious sense to me, from a financial standpoint, or mathematically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volkok. Anyone else like to speak on this, Russ? Gobbo.
I think it's only important to reinforce with, which Jan said about, a home is a home. So, I feel that that should be the definition, and not necessarily related to single-family homes. You know, a lot of people, 20% of our population, remember the law of Laverne, and I think that you're excluding with them when you say that they don't qualify, especially since the $10,000 can probably go a lot further to help them than it might go into a single-family home. And additionally to the cost component, and nothing against the plan, and I get the money, but from a contractor perspective, 25% of the cost of the refurbishment is going to go to management of the $10,000. I think that is something we should probably think about a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Gobbo. Any other, yes, Lily.
Hi, good evening, my name is Lily Berna. I have something related to this one, because this money is not really like a big money. My house, actually, a single house, and then we did remodel, cost a lot last two years. And then I want to think about, any, probably is not related to myself, because we're not really, we'll apply this one, but the public walk, something in from my house, okay? It's more than one year. The red, white line's still there, because the concrete pops up. So, nobody fixed it, more than one year. I mentioned once the last time I was here. And then I saw the post talk about the public walker, fix the roof. My house actually is a very beautiful rose garden. A lot of people, we will slow down, watch, that's happy they not walk so fast. Otherwise, very easy, kid there and fall there, okay? Even the bill will not on me, because the public belongs to the city, but I don't want to see that happen. Please have somebody follow up, because I don't think it costs a lot of money, but it's very dangerous, right in front of my house, the sidewalk pops up, maybe because of the tree, okay? So, small things, but I think it's happened everywhere. After the big wind, the cities are a lot of places need to be fixed. So, I want to, the budget really need to go to that part, public walk, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Anybody else on this matter? We're going to close the public hearing and move back up to the desk. Did you want to answer a few questions?
No, no questions for council, or if there's anything else you want me to answer about the mobile home part?
No, we, I think Councilor Lawson had a question.
So, Candace, for, so, one, I would tend to agree that we, if the past plan did include mobile home parts, would that be something we consider for this one? And I just want to clarify again, that the $100,000 is a cap. That is not a given, that they will spend that much, and it's not $100,000 to administer one $10,000 award, it is to administer $400,000. And I, and I get that that still sounds like a very large percentage, but I wanted to clarify, so we know what we're talking about. We're not paying someone $100,000 to administer solely a $10,000 award of monies. The other thing I would also draw attention to is, because it is ARPA monies, my understanding is, the administration of this program includes not only the methodology in which to identify, select, recruit the potential individuals that would fall under the criteria for this, for these monies, but it also requires a reporting component to make sure that we are applying ARPA funds in a manner that is consistent with the awards, so that the city itself does not get in trouble for spending the money incorrectly. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I can say that that is one of the reasons we went with this firm specifically, they have experience with ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Brosby.
Under the, the prior housing rehabilitation program, and, sorry to ask this question earlier, so they could even have it in front of you, but how many were mobile homes that were, sorry, concept? I don't want, I don't want to pitch you on the spot, I should ask the question.
Just go back there, Jan. It's like me with a basketball.
Just to know, like, the percentage of that single-family homes as well?
95.
95?
Yeah.
Percent or number?
Percent.
So, there were 90% of the, of the funds used in the prior were for mobile homes, not single-family homes?
And then I think that just reinforces the point that this should not be restricted to just single-family homes, that we need to open it up for mobile home parts. So, if we can just make sure, do we need to change the motion at all, or is that just?
No, we can just give that direction, but the two things, I would point out, we were bringing back based on council's prior action for neighborhood right, or direction for neighborhood revitalization, plus the previous program was a reafirm funding opportunity. This is finite, so it is just two aspects that when we were designing it to bring it forward, that that was kind of a conscious base on those two points. But, if that's something the council wishes to pursue, now, also looking back to the prior program, it was $6,000 for a mobile home and $10,000 for a single-family. So, we could get further leverage on our dollars as well, if we wanted to do that, too.
Well, let's just go backwards then, I mean, I wasn't aware it was so many further mobile homes, but, is that, is that a, is that a good enough breakout? I mean, obviously, they're both expensive to upkeep. I don't care if you have a mobile home or a house, it doesn't matter, they're both the same, you know? But, is that something that would be, I'm asking you guys?
It's been a while since we've administered the program, prices have obviously gone up.
So, the only thing we could offer would be to, since we have Willdan that we're recommending to go with, maybe they have some experience, I'm sure they do, in putting these in mobile homes versus a single-family to determine what that ratio between one versus the other should be. And we could bring that back, if that's the direction the council has part of the final, the program. I mean, if that's what you would like to do.
I think that, I, yes, I think that's a good idea.
So, I think, I think, it sounds like tonight we'd be able to at least approve the contract with Willdan Engineering, and I really would support that, because I know Willdan is also involved in energy efficiency activities that Southern California Edison and the other utilities are supporting statewide with regard to energy efficiency programs and fuel substitution programs. So, I think they're in a good place there, where they'd be able to offer our residents opportunities that, I know it from my part, but I do also agree that if we can, we could sit down and chat with them and make sure that all the, all the programs align with ARPA funding, because I wouldn't want to jeopardize that piece, but to the extent that we can extend it beyond the traditional single-family residence to address other aspects, I think, you know, the primary key is that it's low-income, and, and, is it low-end, moderate, or is it just?
Low and moderate.
Low and moderate income residents are eligible for it. So, so I think, I would make a motion that we approve the contract and we ask for some, you know, continued creativity to see what we can do under ARPA to extend to other residents that are in the low and moderate income brackets.
And that's fine, I guess I would just like to clarify, do you want us to bring the program back for approval? Or you're going to leave it to staff's discretion, so that, otherwise, we're going to have to schedule another meeting to come back? But, I'm fine with, I got the direction, I know I could, I know where we need to go.
I think we're fine to say that we got the contract, we just encourage you to investigate those other activities and go forward with it.
And Willdan, Willdan is, Willdan is, it's a, it's a great company, there's no question about it. And I know that they're very, well, my statement would be they're overqualified for what they're doing, especially for our particular ARPA fund situation. But, I do appreciate Mr. Bochette bringing that up. I, you know, sometimes you don't think about all the other ancillary stuff, but our mobile home community is massive, so. And with the windstorms, I think our mobile home community's, I think, hit, would hit the hardest with the awnings and wind damage and things like that, so. So, basically, we're going to go ahead and approve the Willdan, would you say Willdan? And then they'll come back with us with that?
No, they're not going to come back.
Oh, you're just going to make recommendations, not for the, not for the, not for the ARPA, but just the mobile homes, we're just going to include that now.
Just going to include it now?
Very good.
We're going to come up, my, what I'm hearing is, is the question is, $6,000 enough in the, the ratio between the higher end? And we're going to go back and talk to Willdan about what they are experiencing in other programs that they have, and we will right-size it to fit that, very good?
Then we need a motion for that.
Well, we have a motion, and I will make the second.
And that's, vote, please.
And that is a unanimous vote.
That was an interesting sound back there. I think it was accommodating to modify the motion, maybe.
We have public comments now.
Hey, Sherry.
Sherry, come on, I'm Sherry.
I apologize for jumping right on that.
That's okay.
So, I have a letter to J.R. Reynolds. On behalf of the Laverne Historical Society, I would like to thank you for your excellent leadership in helping to create the new website in the City of Laverne. I spent several hours exploring this site, and I find it easy to navigate, informative, and attractive in its design. No doubt, a few glitches will be uncovered as staff and community members familiarize themselves with the site, but it is quite impressive. Additional thanks go to Community Services Manager Yvonne Durea, Information Systems Specialist Romer Maxino, Management Analyst Aaron Beilstein? Beilstein. Wow, that's not the German pronunciation. And others for expending the effort it must have taken to reduce this representation of our city. You exemplify the pride of Laverne. Sincerely, Sherry Best, on behalf of the Historical Society. Thank you, J.R.
Thank you, Sherry. Public comment, anybody wish to come up with a public comment? Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Mr. Elected Mayor, or soon-to-be-last elected mayor, I guess, and the rest of the council. On April 25th, the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens sponsored a very successful meet and greet at the Hordsberg Heritage Square. Now, this was hosted by the owner, Linda Wilkinson. We had approximately 100 people that attended. It was all the non-current council candidates. And each had an area, people came in, talked to them, got to know them, hopefully, and got to ask them questions, and got to know each candidate, regardless of the district. Based on that, LV3C, by the way, I think it's the largest resident membership group in the city, currently over 1,500 people. We'd like to invite our elected mayor and current candidate for District 4 Council, along with Mayor Davis, the candidate for District 1, to come to a Q and A in the week of May 16th. Now, we plan to do this at the Rock of the Foothills Church on the corner of Wheeler and Baseline. So, basically, I'd like to ask if you guys could both commit to that, and then we can get the details to you. Great, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Gobbo.
Saw me filling out my card. Blue sheets give you away, no doubt, no doubt.
First of all, I thought tonight's presentation on mosquitoes was about the most entertaining thing I have seen in this chamber in at least a year, so kudos to Levy in that presentation. And I guess it gives us food for thought. And I didn't plan this, but it is appropriate to remind everybody that maybe that does have something to do with my acquaintance tonight. As I remind everybody, in the last council meeting, the Sierra Laverne Golf Course is in serious state, and it continues to be both eyesore and safety threat immediate neighborhoods. I've regularly provided a comment on this issue over the last year or so, and I know, Mr. Rusty, that you said that you were working on the letter, and I hope to get an update tonight. And I'm here once again expressing genuine concern about this golf course, where we can no longer ignore what this is and what it may become as the pressure to develop closed golf courses continues to grow on many fronts. So, I've been doing my homework and paying attention to what's going on around us, and a recent example of the fortitude these buyers of golf courses have to develop the land, and to the extent to which they will go when they don't get their way by finding other legal avenues to distress a community like Laverne, there's currently an extreme outbreak with what appears to be minimal legal, excuse me, with minimal legal obstructions leaving the county board of supervisors in San Diego citing drainage issues as their big problem with the plan to transform the failed effort to build homes into a sand mine. The project will last 10 years before the land is reconstructed and likely, likely, just in time for the law to change not to build their homes. So, from what we've missed in opportunity over the last year, maybe the opportunity to pay attention to what's going on in Sacramento, legislatures, or at least one in our state, is now working again to pass more bills like 89, maybe 10. These bills leave our city with a new line of defense against housing development, and guess what else? There is now a member of Congress, Christina Garcia, representing the 58th Assembly District, who is set on getting a certain bill passed. She's tried before, and her most recent effort didn't get, get through, but it's named AD672, which would both allow and provide incentives to shutter municipal golf courses and repurpose them for low to moderate income. them for low to moderate income housing. This would take all the controls out of the city government. Is Marshall Canyon Golf Course on somebody's list? These bills are intended to force the build-out of affordable housing and/or low-income housing. Moreover, claims about the value of municipal, municipal golf courses to the community have focused narrowly on whether they are self-sufficing and exclude entirely their value as environmental green spaces or habitats. If that does not concern you enough, Garcia's bill would remove municipal golf courses from protections of the Public Park Preservation Act, provide an exemption to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, make it easier to rezone public open space land for housing. So I ask, who is paying attention to this, and what are we doing to proactively address both of those golf courses?
And then a public comment? Any vote champ?
I too want to take the time to thank J.R. and the team that that website is, oh my God, it's so much better. I can't even give you a percentage of how many. I spent over an hour on it today, and it is really, everybody should go to it, it's, it's really, really good. The only thing I ask is that, like, on the old website, it used to have on the right-hand side kind of like a go-to for everything that was going on in the city. If we could have something like that, so people don't have to go to each page, because a lot of times people don't take the time to do that. So if you have a one-stop place for everything, it would be just as, you know, I mean, that, and then it would be perfect. On a separate note, I do have a question for the council. I know your closed session pertains to an issue that involves Southern California Edison, and I would like to know if Mr. Davis is gonna recuse himself for that as well? Okay.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Lily.
Thank you for the new website, I really like it, so I will start to explore, and then we'll give you some more feedback. So what I want to bring up is the last Monday, Mr. Bowen talked about the meeting, actually it's the opening for the Lordsburg, Lordsburg Heritage Square, okay, it's hard to say the name, but it's really impressed me, because Linda did a lot of job by herself. So I remember last time, the time when she just started, it was a proper get, you know, opportunity to move that house. It's really, really amazing, because I never seen a house could move like that. And it's, because COVID, it's very difficult to continue to do that, but she just did amazing job, because impressed me a lot. I live very close, so every time I drove by, I see some progress. And especially, I asked her permission, and then I volunteered to, for her rose garden and donate some roses from the nursery from Foothill. So something happened in Laverne, because a lot of things maybe not include to official heritage, history, historical, maybe not in that group, right? So, but she definitely did amazing job, impressed all of us. So I, I hope her, she will definitely be recognized, it's just a citizen of Laverne. She did a lot of work by herself, so that's what I want to share, thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Anyone else?
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and close public comments and move to council comments and conference meeting reports. Who would like to start?
I will. Okay, I've got good news, and I got a little bit of bad news, but then it goes back to good news. So we'll start with the good news, is Gold Line finished their project, as of now, on White Avenue, it is now open. You go to the dairy, use the dairy, get over there and support them, and you can go on through. Now, the whole concept was to open it up for the county fair. As you all know, the county fair opens up this Friday, and it's Thursday, and Laverne Day is Friday, May 6th. That's the day that matters, it's Laverne Day. So I hope a lot of people come, there's discount tickets for Laverne residents, you can go on to their website and you'll see that. Also, though, I drove yesterday, Sunday, over White, I wanted to see how smooth it was, because we all know how wonderful Wheeler is. Well, White Avenue is not smooth, and you go, you're truly, it's like a little-
Is that the paddle?
Roller coaster, that's the paddle. So today I did talk to Mr. Russi, and he was going to also look into it, but I called Habib, who is our CEO for Gold Line, and then he connected me with a gentleman that's in charge of the construction, and he had told me they wanted to open up for the county fair, and so they will be out tomorrow, they realize it is real bumpy, they're gonna fix it, where the, where they worked and where our streets come together, they're gonna work on that hump, so it's not so bad on our cars. But then, not do any more work, to, and the final work will be done as soon as the fair's done at the end of the month, and then they will finish up that street. So, you know, pass it on, if you hear from people complaining about White Avenue, it will get completed, and at least it's open now, we're thrilled that we get to have it open for the fair, so. The only other thing is, I let all of you talk about it, too, because we've been at so many events this month, but Amazon Fresh opened up, everybody take the time to go in, it's, it's exciting, and it's, it's like a little adventure when you go in there. I don't want to say anymore, you gotta figure it out yourself, it's, I'm happy to have them here in Laverne. And the only other thing is, May is very busy in our city. I want everyone to really think about the kids in our district, senior projects are happening this month, there's all kinds of CIF, you know, award ceremonies going on, and it's exciting for the kids. There's some city committees on that we postponed till next month, because we're so busy with all the activities. So be respectful of the kids, our school district, all that's going on, Teacher of the Year is this month, it's, it's a fun month for all of us to attend, but also the kids are out there running around excited, so, you know, let's be, you know, cautious of what we do as we drive around with traffic activities. So I wish you all, you know, a good evening, and thanks for coming up tonight.
Mr. Crosby, take her, please.
Hi, I think Councilmember Carter said, said it all, but I was gonna talk about was the fair opening up, and everybody go enjoy yourself at Laverne Day at the Fair this Friday.
Councilwoman Lapp.
So I just wanted to report back on some things that I mentioned earlier at other meetings. ULV had their scholarship gala the other, last weekend, and it's really exciting, because they did raise 1.1 million in scholarships, and an additional 2.7 million in new gifts to also benefit different programs, including the Randall Lewis Center for Entrepreneurship, Innovation, and Social Impact, as well as the new RNDSN program in the College of Health and Community Wellbeing. And I think this is really exciting, because this is an opportunity for us to continue to train young people in our area, and hopefully invigorate the economy, help them come and hopefully put down roots in this area, and really be the next generation of professionals in our town. So I'm really excited about that, so I wanted to say, you know, to let everybody know that. And for those who may not have any history or information about the University of Laverne, almost half of our students are first-generation students, so nobody else in their family has gone to college before, so that's a tremendous, a tremendous feat, and 98% of the students there receive some sort of financial aid. And I also wanted to shout out Sharon Johnson-May, if anyone knew her, she very nicely volunteered to be Leah, so we have a Leo and a Leah, so she dressed up as Leah at our gala in a full-on, you know, black formal dress, and her-
I guess that does surprise me.
I know, I, so, I thought it was very nice of her to give up part of her Saturday for that. Also wanted to wish all the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day this coming Sunday, as well as Feliz Dia de las Madres on May 10th. And then just to reiterate, you know, I'm excited that we are celebrating Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, but would be remiss if I did not also mention that it is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so if you need any information, Tri-City Mental Health, it has a series of informational opportunities on the website to learn more about how you can help maintain your mental health, how you can make sure that you are receiving the resources that you or someone you know might need, and especially, you know, as we've come out of COVID, I think it's done a number on quite a few people, especially, you know, as Ron mentioned, our students who are now just finally kind of getting back into a real end-of-high-school experience, a real, you know, all the things that they miss out on because of COVID, so just something to think about and keep in mind, so. But thank you, everyone, for being here. My last thing would be, Cassie does have a meeting this Wednesday, and if you'd like to attend, all you need to do is contact the city, and they will give you the Zoom information for it. So again, thanks, everybody, for being here, because I could see all your faces, congratulations to Dillon High School's basketball team.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lapp. Mayor Proton Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, thank you all for being here tonight. We had a huge standing-room-only crowd earlier this evening when we got to celebrate Damian High School's CIF State Championship. That was a lot of fun, lasted too little time, but it was a lot of fun. Likewise, the, I guess it was a Friday ago, was the Laverne-St. Demas Educational Foundation's charity golf event to raise money for the, for mental wel-, uh, mental wellness. They've got a campaign going on, so if you're interested in supporting our schoolchildren by supporting the Ed Foundation for Mental Wellness, it's, it's an important issue, especially with regard to kids making that transition back into school. I did also get to attend the ULV Gala, and that was a blast, got to take a picture with Sharon, Leah, and Leo, and as being a former mascot myself, that was especially wonderful to be able to be there. Those two get to talk, though, which is a whole different thing, so we'll talk about that some other time. Amazon Fresh opening was, was really exciting, so was the tour we took the day earlier. If you go, when you go, I should say, just be prepared, you'll be on camera the entire time.
The entire?
Just, yeah, the entire time, you'll be on camera. Not that anybody's gonna be watching, but you will be on camera. White Avenue opening was very exciting and, and surprising to some of my neighbors, because it opened at about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, so those of us who went on on morning walks and thought it was still closed, and then went out on afternoon walks, were, had a rude awakening, because all of a sudden the traffic coming northbound on White Avenue was a bit faster than the people that had been turning on First Street, so, and, and, but I'm a little disappointed that they're gonna fix the roads, because the speeds were somewhat contained by the roughness of the tracks and the migration back onto the old asphalt. The fair is starting this Friday, my son is also graduating college up in Logan, Utah on Thursday, so I won't be at Cassie, this is my early notice to that, and I unfortunately won't be able to make Laverne Day, because I'll be selling my son, or celebrating my son, not selling.
You would like to sell him now.
I would sell my children later on.
I would like to recoup some of the, yeah, recoup some of the money, but no, I'll be celebrating my son, who has spent five years to get his, his degree, which is faster than his dad did, so that's a good thing. Today is the end of Ramadan, so Happy Ed Illa Fair for those who celebrate that celebration, and Happy Mother's Day, everyone, for this, this Sunday, to, to mothers of all kinds. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Davis. Happy Mother's Day to all those out there, including my mom. Hey, Mom, Happy Mother's Day. Which I will be seeing her. There was a mention regarding the Sierra Laverne Golf Course. I live there, and we have been, as a community, extremely busy during COVID, trying to keep our businesses open, trying to make sure that our city's functioning, working on a fire department to rebuild and open up, also with Apple Bowl Page keeping a prison out of our neighborhood. So believe me, it's not something that I have not looked at every single day. I've said it already on the dais, that it's disgusting. The clubhouse is wonderful, but the golf course is a mess. But as a city, we have to be careful, we have to have focus, and we have to look at that, but believe me, it is going to be looked at, and we'll address it. We have a lot of campaign forums coming up, we have the 12th at the Community Center for the, the city campaign forum. We just had a campaign forum today with the Downtown Business District, I suggest that you all go. Most of the people were there today, I suggest to meet your candidates, and thank you, LVC3, for your candidate forum you guys did at the Heritage House, Linda Wilkinson's place. The election is June 7th, I suggest, actually, we'll be getting our information out in the mail, they should be mailing it on the 9th, I think, we should be receiving it a short time after that. So more information on our brand-new website about, there are some more forums, I think, is Hillcrest gonna have a forum?
Yeah.
So a campaign forum, so please, it's important, meet your candidates, it's important, the most important thing to do is vote, that's our God-given right, and for those, please, get out and vote, pay attention to the candidates, and, that's it. But thank you all, yes?
I forgot one thing, Saturday, May 14th, is the line walk.
Oh, yes.
So if you've not purchased tickets yet and would like to attend, it's a good time.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's online.
Oh, is it?
Is it sold?
No.
No. It's online, so just, I did a minute with the mayor, it's very important that they, I think they still need some help on setup, is that correct?
We're okay now.
You okay now? They don't need any help setting up, so never mind, they got their help, no, but-
Buy your tickets.
But buy your tickets online, it's a totally different format, I think it's $55, and it's 30, $55 for a participant, and it's $35 for a designated driver. I got it right, it's amazing. But you know what? We gotta really make this thing successful, because we've been without one for a number of years, and I think it's gonna be a great day, it's gonna be a lot of fun, a lot of fun for our community, but, and we'll keep you updated, if they do need help, they'll let us know, and we'll push it out there, just for, I think it's for setting up in the afternoon is what initially, so.
One clarification, you had mentioned Hillcrest, Hillcrest is holding a forum for District One.
Oh, they're not gonna, they're not-
Well, just because their residents, they're not even sure they're allowing anybody in other than their residents only.
So they have to do it in the street outside?
Well, no, it's gonna be in the meeting house, but-
So I just, you know, I heard, I was triggered, so-
District One at 10:00 AM on the same day as 12.
Oh, well, there you go.
Well, those, you know what, it doesn't matter, it's a forum for candidates, so please.
And everybody, thank you all for being here, I really love Damian's basketball thing, that's the most fun, we have large groups like that, and I just don't know whether feeding those young men. I thought my boys were tall, you know. Do we have any, we have a, we have a closed session, Mr. Russi.
We actually have two.
We have two closed sessions.
And one is anticipated litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection B4, one case, and the other is existing litigation, and is to meet under Government Code 54956.9, subsection A, to discuss the Southern California-
Which Mr. Davis, Davis will not be participating in his employment with Southern California Edison.
Yeah.
And are we going to, are we going to recess? We're not gonna report out, is that correct? So we are going to adjourn to our, we're gonna recess into our closed session. I'll get it one of these days, when I'm done being mayor, I'll get one. We are adjourned at 8:02, our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, May 16th, at 6:30 PM, 20:22. I know, and I lost it.